Well, good morning, everybody. It's June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the Delta County Board of County Commissioners regular meeting. Uh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have any edits or additions for agenda today? Agenda is stands as presented. Uh, constituent times, anybody in the room like to visit with commissioners this morning? Hearing none, anybody online? Thank you. Then we'll go to county clerk, Ms. Terry.
This morning I have the minutes from the June tenth. The B O C C regular meeting, are there any additions, changes?
No, I have none.
None here, none.
Thank you. Um, also this morning have an application for a tavern liquor license for the public doing business as the Kiss Flower located at seven fifty-nine Shady Lane in Payonia. I do have the applicant, uh, General Burns is here. Would you like to go ahead and come on up? Just have a seat there, Joe, in case the board has any questions for you. In your packet, you have the preliminary report that I had, um, prepared. Mr. Curran also received that packet or that, um, preliminary report. Um, this restaurant serves fresh, locally grown food and currently is not open all year, but in the future would like to be open year round. Um, this is a lease property of six point six eight nine acres in size, and the restaurant lease is for approximately a half acre with surrounding neighborhood being made up of the river park and residential homes. The applicant has applied for a tavern license and will be selling, will be, and shall be issued a person selling alcohol beverage by drink only to customers for consumption on the premises. There has not been enough denial of an application by the state or local liquor licensing for a tavern license at this location. Um, he does have, he is entitled to possession of the premises by lease. Um, I have talked to him about getting with the planning department to make sure that he is in compliance with all Sony, Fire, and, and not in violation of any other applicable laws that Delta County has. We did do a onsite inspection on May twenty-ninth. Um, the building where this is, this license is proposed, um, is not within five hundred feet of a local pool or, um, um, principal campus or any college, university, or seminary. Um, we also, it is within, it is six hundred and twenty-three feet away is the school district property, but it is not within that five hundred feet. The storage for alcohol would be locked in a limited public access. Um, this property is located next to the Payoni River Park, near the North Fork at Gennison River. Um, this was previously a gravable pit, but is inoperable at this time. Um, his patio will seat between fifty and fifty-five people. There is no indoor, um, seating, just outdoor only. Signage has already been placed on the patio indicating that they cannot go beyond this point. There appears to be adequate parking, and I did do a background check on Mr. Curran's and everything come back well, and it seems that he is a person of good moral character at this time of the application. Public notice was posted on the property, giving notice of this public hearing, and I have not received any phone calls for, or any comments back. So, at this time, I would recommend the board granting some of these things. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner Terry? I don't think, I think you covered everything.
I have done.
What about for the applicant?
No.
Anything to add?
I think you covered it, Terry. As far as I know, I've never done this before.
Mr. Curran's, I am concerned about the proximity of the river park to your, uh, venue there. Besides signage, how will you control liquor not leaving the premises, the patio area, since there is no indoor seating?
Yeah, I think the first thing that comes to mind, Commissioner, is having more than ample staff keeping an eye on the patio and making sure people are under control, as well as understanding who enters and in what state they enter the premises. Uh, making sure not to serve anyone that shouldn't be served, or anyone that even seems like they may disrespect those boundaries.
That is a concern, that, you know, people just walk off, um, jump back in a boat or whatever, whatever it is with, with alcohol. I'm certainly in favor of grading this, but please know you need to keep very good control of that.
Yes, sir. I'll take that very seriously.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Is there anything else for Terry or the advocate here, Mr. Curran? Not what is the will of the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, application for a tavern liquor license for the third Tropic E B A, the Kiss Flower located at seven fifty-nine Shady Lane in Payonia.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Terry, anything else for us? Thank you. We'll move into commissioner business. First thing on our business for this morning, um, is Ms. Leonie Anderson with our certificate cost allocation.
Uh, every annually, we use a company called M G T to provide, uh, two cost allocation reports for us. One for the county and one for human services. Uh, the, the cost allocation plan provides, uh, amounts of indirect costs, what all of us here in administration, buildings and grounds, public works, uh, county attorney's office, all those that provide services to, uh, other general funds that have employees and to human services. Uh, the first one is for the general fund. Um, and the amounts that, uh, the cost allocation, cost allocation report came up with this year is five hundred and four thousand two fifty-six from Roden Bridge, sixty-six thousand one hundred and thirty from the landfill, and seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight from E nine-one-one. And what we do is we usually, in the following year, we budget those amounts to come from those funds into the general fund to support all the indirect costs for those other departments. The big one is, uh, human services. Uh, human services is usually reimbursed eighty percent from the state, and the county is responsible for twenty percent. That twenty percent, uh, goes through a process through the cost allocation report, and the feds reimburse thirty percent of that twenty percent. And what we've done in the past on this tiny little print sheet, um, the last amounts show the indirect costs from the counties to, uh, uh, human services, less some direct billed items. So, for example, human services pays a monthly amount for the county attorney. So that, uh, if you look at the county attorney line of three hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five, that is less the direct pay of what human services pays to the county attorney through the general fund, and they get reimbursed eighty percent from the state, and then that twenty percent plus anything over gets reimbursed from the feds at the thirty percent. So, um, what we, for this year, the, uh, the very bottom line, the three hundred and fifty thousand one forty-six is the amount that the feds will pay to the county between two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six, July to June, um, through the feds, and they ask quarterly, so that equals eighty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-six per quarter that, uh, the state will send to, directly to the county, and it goes into the general fund to support indirect services. Do you guys have any questions?
Gentlemen?
What?
Feeling a little bit slight here because the county attorney's got a positive three seventy-four, and the county commissioners are negative twenty-nine.
You spend a lot of time at human services? Now, the county attorney's office, know them very well.
They do spend.
Yeah. And, and all the, these items are like, uh, some of, like, the buildings, building use and building depreciation. Human services does not pay any utilities. They don't, do not pay for any custodians, so all this brings that money back into the county. So, yeah.
Well, it's a very complicated formula at times.
With many, it's like a hundred and forty-three pages, so I can give you, provide you a copy. Need some reading material. Now, Robbie has a copy, and I would be happy to forward to all of you if you would like to see it, how it's configured.
So the state reimbursement looks like it used to be thirty-two percent, now it's at thirty percent?
Yes.
Cheapskates.
And these numbers are based on all the twenty twenty-four expenses.
So it lags one year?
Yes. And, uh, I think, like, Roden Bridge went up from last year because that, that was the first full year for you as Pub Works, right, two thousand and twenty-four? So, that, that amount definitely went up, because Scott is not cheap. With his toys or other.
In our packet, we have the certificate of cost allocation plan and indirect cost rate?
Yes, and Wendell has that.
Okay, and he's the only one that needs to sign?
Yes, but you all need to pass that.
Yeah.
I don't have a signature page.
Uh, it's in that yellow. It should have been the first page on the, in the yellow.
Well, it's, it's an action item, gentlemen.
Yes. And we'll file that with, we'll send that to M G T, and we'll file, uh, that with this, M G T will file that with the states and the feds, and they will reimburse us.
Okay. Well, I move that we approve the certificate of cost allocation plan and indirect cost rate and authorize the chair to sign.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for keeping track of all these numbers.
We, uh, we provide, well, building grounds providing for emission, road bridge providing for making, I mean, it's, the trader has to track their work in the quarter, all of this, all these things, we feed into this little machine.
Yeah, because it has a crank on the end of it, you just.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that takes us to item two, the final bid tally, front-end loader. Scott, Mark? It's nice to see we're getting so many bidders.
Right. Yeah, we're looking for a new loader, District One, uh, twenty twenty-four, I put in, uh, a, uh, quote, I tried to get a quote for a cat for the, for a new loader, and I put in three twenty on the, on the price for the loader. Um, the quote was around, uh, I think it was three oh six or something like that. Was a quote that I got. So, um, the bids that came in are quite a bit under that. So, doing good there, I think. I don't know if you guys have the.
Yeah, we've got the big tally sheets.
Okay, so you guys didn't look at all that? Um, we went through and, and of course, we went out and looked at all the equipment, what we could. Um, with the exception to the Arnold Machinery Company, they, they, uh, I'm not sure what's going on them, they, they have like a, uh, a storage building in Grand Junction or something. Doesn't look like nothing's going on. And I think they're out of Denver, so they're kind of out of the bid area anyways, I think.
What's going on with Four Rivers? What are they actually proposing to provide there? Is, is it a cat? Is it a Volvo?
It is a, um, not a commercial grade cat, or, uh, uh, John Deere. It's a, a cheaper grade, the G, the P is, is the, uh, higher grade. Uh, more commercial, uh, heavy production, yeah. Um, so they got a cheaper grade on that. Um, a little bit less horsepower.
Smaller hydro, smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not apple, the apple.
Yeah, it's not even worth talking about.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, I wasn't real impressed with it, put it that way.
Okay. What about the three different cats, Wagners?
Okay, um, the first one on the left, that is a, that's a cat, nine fifty G C, they call it. It's, they're made in China. They're making the cheaper uh, machines like that. The G Cs are made in China. Um, they got basic stuff on them. Um, they're not, uh, again, like a commercial grade. Um, I'm not sure why he even put them in there, but, um, as a bid. But the one on the left has all the specs that we asked for. That's why it's a little bit more.
But again, it's the smaller hydraulic, smaller differential, smaller transmission. It's not a production.
Yeah, it's got, uh, cheaper tires on it, um, several things, several things are, um, just made cheaper, and, uh, that's why you're seeing that price. The one in the middle is just a same machine. It's the same machine as the one on the left, but it is, uh, it doesn't have any of the specs on it. It doesn't have the quick coupler. So, uh, it doesn't have any of the, the stuff that we asked for and wanted. And so that's why you're seeing the price difference there. Um, and those, as far as I know, only have like a two-year warranty on them. And, uh, uh, they're a cheaper made caterpillar, made in China. I don't know why they are doing that now, but. The one over on the right is a nine fifty, like what we have. We have a nine fifty M, they call it. Uh, the newer cats, they just call them nine fifties now, but it's the same thing. Uh, real close to the same machine. Um, it is more of a commercial grade, uh, better transmission. I mean, they got all kinds of extra stuff on it. Um, the one we have, the M, uh, we've had it for ten years now, and very little of, nothing, uh, has broke down on it. Um, we've gotten some good use out of it. Uh, great machine, just throwing that out there.
Why are we, why are we getting in with that?
Well, no, we're not, we're not replacing them. Yeah. Yeah, we're replacing the old, there's the old trade-in.
Yeah.
The ninety-two. Ninety-two, yeah, we've got, it's way past tired. So, um, that's what we're trying to replace there. And then, uh, we'll have a smooth-lipped bucket compared to a tooth bucket, which is all we have for the M, is the tooth, but with this machine, I can swap buckets. They'll swap right out. I don't have to try to buy another tooth bucket. Uh, because we do use both buckets. We gotta have teeth, tooth bucket and a smooth bucket to pick stuff up and.
How's the warranty on?
The warranty on that is, actually, they said they were gonna give me a five-year warranty. Um, it's, uh, and then it was, uh, twenty-five hundred hours, uh, five-year, and that's what we had on our M, and we have, I mean, uh, that's, that's awesome. That is huge, 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 I think.
The rest of the units, they give a twenty-five hundred hour warranty, but you get one year.
Yeah.
And so it's pretty hard to put a twenty-five hundred hour loader in a year or so. They're gonna make money on you.
In ten years, we've had two things go to work on that. One of them was under warranty, and the other one, just the other day, we had to pay, and it wasn't nothing major. So, and in, you know, five years, we haven't had to, and it's bumper to bumper. Um, really good. Also, the, the parts interchange with our M, same filters, you know, same filter, same tools, buckets. Um, and, uh, so that's the difference in the cats right there.
What's the difference between the Volvo and the Cat nine fifty?
The Volvo is real similar. Um, it's a higher grade. It's, it's a pretty good machine. Um, the problems, uh, if you, if there was problems with it is in the, the service, possibly the parts, and, uh, uh, reliability, I guess you'd call it, um, just from what we've had Volvo before at the dump. And, uh, uh, District Two has a Volvo, and the mechanics don't seem to like what's going on. It's, they're hard to work on.
Emissions problem.
They had some emissions problems. They do have a new motor on the Volvo now. I don't know if they fixed some of the issues. Uh, other net, the Volvos. I mean, I can't find anything where else. It's a nice, nice machine. Everything's pretty nice on it. Um, but, uh.
What kind of warranty with the Volvos?
Same as Volvo. I know it's, uh, twenty-five hundred, but.
A year?
One year, you said?
It's one year for the twenty-five hundred hours versus the cap. You have five years for the twenty-five hundred hour.
Per year?
Yes.
So, there's, uh, uh, like I say, the hot tachi. We don't know nothing about it anyways. I don't, I don't even know if we can get parts for it. We'd be getting it out of Denver or something.
Yeah, they priced themselves out of this bid.
So, that's all I've come up with.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
About a hundred grand higher?
Yeah, that's how I can work.
Um, I, uh, if it was me, and, or my opinion is, is the, uh, I really like to go with the cat, the nine fifty cat, uh, it would be the two sixty-eight one. I know it's more, but, um, I think the stuff that you get with it is definitely.
And that's bidder number six?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then maybe behind that would be the Volvo, would be my, my pick for what best fits us in District One.
Is the Volvo made in U S or is it Swedish-made?
It's Sweden, I think, and.
I think it's Swedish, yeah.
And they have a plant, I think, in Pennsylvania or something.
We, we waited on some parts for months, uh, a few times on the two molds that we have. And then, like I said, we've had a lot of emissions problems. We've had no emissions problems on the, the newer nine fifty in District One. So, I, I think there's a difference in emissions.
And it's basically that the cat's basically the same thing we've got, um, with a few more, few more, uh, things that they've added to.
Other questions for Mark or Scott on these?
Hmm, got it, man.
And this was budgeted, is that correct?
Yeah.
Because we budget, what you saw, you budgeted three twenty?
Three twenty, and it came in at, at three, uh, or, it was like three oh six or something. Is what the quote was. Three oh seven was the quote we got. Captain owner.
Other questions, gentlemen? What do you think?
Well, I moved that we, uh, approve bidder number six Wagner Equipment out of Grand Junction on the caterpillar nine fifty, uh, for the front-end loader of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand forty-nine dollars. Subtract out nineteen thousand for the trade-in for a total of two, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand and forty-nine dollars.
What's the three oh seven number?
That was the quote when we get quotes to, uh, for a budget.
Okay.
But, yeah.
To remember that number.
So they can, yeah, we, there was a lot of cat incentives, I think, is.
Um, I will second Mr. Lane's motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good luck. Appreciate the hard work. Getting these dumper spool.
Yes, a little more involved than, uh, some of the modern machines. A little more competitive.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yep.
Terry, just in time.
Yeah.
Please join us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're here to discuss the new addressing policy.
Yes, finally. Been on it for a long time. So, um, I hope you guys had time to look over it. It's a lot the same, it has the same content of the, as the, the one it's replacing. It's, and a lot of it is, um, how we, how we, the workflow and how we handle things now. It's just, now it's written in this policy. Um, the old one was missing a lot of information on how we handle address changes when they occur, um, sign placement, um, how we might handle, um, some road naming changes, um, that are within conflict. Uh, it also, um, describes some unique addressing better. Um, where addressing starts and stops, so. Um, I guess, do you want to go through anything in particular? Do you, you want me to point out some of the changes?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, definitely ones that would be relevant to, to, um, for the B O C C is.
Terry, which ones are we gonna get phone calls on?
Um, if there are changes to existing road names, which we try not to do. Um, that's only happened once, twice, since I've been here. Um, but if, um, so changes to existing road names would come, come to, to the board and be changed through a resolution. That's not spelled out or defined in the old one. Um, and so that's on page three, and I, I talk about that in one point, two point B. Um, and mostly, I, I hope that, um, this helps give my department and the address official more um, direction, um, and something to, to look at that gives more direction. Um, so also page seven, two point one point D, um, road names for extraordinary alignment. Um, can be difficult to name things that, uh, don't directly go north or south, or east or west. Um, so sometimes, um, that happens, and right now, how we deal with it is, um, we determine it by distance, like, if more distance goes north or south, um, or east or west, and that's how we name it. But, so, so we do, that's how we react to those kinds of roads that are designed, but, um, we don't have that written anywhere, how, how we take action on that. Um, so, also, um, one of the challenges we have now with road naming new roads is, um, north-south traveling roads are on. is, um, north-south traveling roads are on a newer grid. Um, but I've had instances already where I've, I'm out of numbers. And I don't wanna rename another road with the same number, but a different suffix, even if it's in a different subcode. So, um, we're just, i- in those cases, we're looking at something related to that area, maybe historical or topography, um, to name the road. Uh, and then if there's nothing for that, then we'll go to picking a road name that just follows the guidelines as far as like character length, spelling, pronunciation. Also, I added section two point two, which is road name sign display standards. Which is how we've been functioning with road name signs and displaying them. And it just wasn't written anywhere. So how we use the green signs, the blue signs are private, um, and the brown are for like federal B L M.
Have you had any input from the public on this?
I have not.
Carrie, what I was looking at, the, the last email I sent you doing this and, um, I don't know. We use the interim address official quite, quite often here. Is anywhere in this now designate who the address official is?
Um.
That was kind of that last email I, the last comment I had. Cause it designates the duties of the address official and.
Right.
Maybe there would be a presumption that that would be your role, but I think it needs to be clear in this document, who is the addressing official?
I think that's, um, well, it's a good discussion point, actually. Um, is it, is it just gonna be the G I S office? Is it gonna be somebody in particular the board needs to assign it to? Or is it just assumed that it's gonna be some, the G I S office? I mean.
Well, you're talking to an attorney, so I try not to make assumptions.
Yeah.
No, I, no, I think there should just, I mean, it's the board, whatever the board wants to do, but I, I would make the assumption that it would be.
So I didn't.
The director of G I S unless otherwise appointed or something to that. That's because I don't think you wanna go back to the board and back to the board to.
Like every year, they something, yeah.
I, I would, that would be my opinion, but it should have some language in there.
On the resolution, uh, at you get past, I think, page two. Paragraph three, the Board of County Commissioners hereby delegates to the county address official.
And that is designating the authority, but it doesn't ever say who that person is.
So, yeah, and in our office, when we sign it, uh, an address letter that goes out, it's either myself or the analyst. So it depends on who actually assigns it, so. Right now, I consider both of us addressing officials.
The document is pretty full, so maybe something short and sweet, like maybe just some initials W A K or something like that.
Uh, no, I mean, we do have, we also have, uh, defined in here as addressing stakeholders. Um, and that's the addressing official, the G I S department, the M S A coordinator, dispatch, O E M, Public Works, um, and then I go on to just referring to that group as the addressing stakeholders. So anytime I assign a new road name or come up with rootnet or have any problems, I contact all, that whole group and ask for input.
So you, you're looking for a, like Carrie's name in there?
I would.
Yeah, the G I S director needs to be the primary addressing official.
I would probably think the way it was, we should say something effective. Board of Moynihan's, um, G I S directors, I don't know which type it was exactly, um, or did, you know, um, has the addressing or designated, so that way Carrie and her authority can designate one of her assistants to sign something to that.
That's a good point. I think we need to do that.
Because that term is used so much in this time. The only other thing I have is the version that I have looking at still is, it still is, um, watermarked as a draft. So obviously, if something the board is gonna sign something, I have to be intervened.
Yeah.
Big version without the word draft.
Yeah.
I think that's all I know.
Yeah. Um, so other stuff, let's see, that was added. The whole format has really changed, um, but I also add a section three point four on page twelve. Uh, we talk about, uh, the nine-one-one address sign placement and the maintenance on those and what that should look like. I had documents that explained this, but not part of the addressing, and it's really part of our addressing. So I think it's important that the signs are all placed, um, consistently the same way. What I'm still waiting for the surveyor to get back to me on, um, describing the P L S S, um, location of the beginning of the road names and address grid. I've had a couple of us look at it, but I'll come up with a different way to describe the, the corner location in the section township, so.
Are you not asking the board to adopt this today? Is this just kind of an initial bouncing off the board?
Yeah.
I can't forget this thing though.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Interested in any feedback, I guess, cause I assume there may be some.
Walk through this with Scott, any of the road and bridge guys?
Yeah, I brought it to the road and bridge meeting two weeks ago. And shared it with them and went over some of the items that were specific to them as far as the signs go.
Questions, gentlemen?
No, I had my questions answered.
I'd say just the addition of the appointing the designated person that would be in charge of that, the uh, director of G I S, and they're somewhere, so that person is labeled, not necessarily named, but labeled. And uh, everything else is good. If you don't have any, any feedback from road and bridge at all, do they have any comments or?
I haven't gotten anything from them yet. That was about two weeks ago.
Well, if we could add that one statement into the revolution and if we could hit Scott up one more time. We're doing another road and bridge meeting today. You're welcome to join us for a few minutes there if you'd like.
Okay.
Just see if there's any, anything they picked up on. I haven't gotten back to you yet.
Okay.
Make it sense to bring this back, say, July second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Carrie, do you want me to add a paragraph into that resolution?
Yeah.
And then I can kick it back to you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that'd be July first?
Whatever.
Okay.
Not a second, but maybe it's the first. I think you're right.
I think I can.
It is.
I might need to push it to the next week, cause I think I'm maybe out on the second.
Well. So I'll, you get it on the agenda.
Did you pick up the lead, Carrie?
So Carrie, you're thinking more about the fifteenth of July and?
Yeah.
And you'll, um, maybe update it version.
Yes, yes.
If there's success, whatever, whatever works for it. Your second.
Well, the line goes two twenty, two twenty-one, whatever.
Yeah. Well, Carrie, I liked your presentation. Thank you very much, and I liked your email in- introducing the new G I S analyst, and you stayed Frankie Hernandez, and then at the end you said, thank you, and stay mappy.
Yeah.
Looked, had to look at it twice, but yeah, stay mappy, that's pretty good.
Have you walked this new, uh, person around?
Yeah.
I must have bested, I'll stop in and introduce.
Yeah. He's in his, uh, I guess this is his third week. Yeah, yep, about two weeks and a half.
So to that. Thanks, Carrie.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Um, next we have our warrants. Is there any questions or comments on those, gentlemen?
I move that we approve the warrants. Numbers one, five, four, four, nine, eight through one, five, four, seven, seven, two, and A C H transactions. One, zero, eight, nine through one, 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 five from May first, twenty twenty-five through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, tolling one million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents in accounts payable and one million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-four cents in monthly county human services and health department May twenty twenty-five payroll for items budgeted and approved per Delta County policy.
And authorize a charity sign?
Yes, and authorize the charity sign.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, pay some bills. Uh, last on our mission or agenda would be Lindsey Mitchell with the B O C C agenda or schedule.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, uh, one thirty to three thirty, we have a work session with Road and Bridge, five sixty dot street. Um, Thursday, uh, today also, three thirty to five is the Board of Health here at five sixty dot street. Um, this Saturday, June twenty-first, ten to noon, is the Minor's Trail Grand Opening at the Fairgrounds in Hotchkiss. That is open to everyone. Please join us. There will be a lot of fun activities for the fans. Of course, you'll get to see the new bridge in Hotchkiss and the new trail. Um, Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, ten to eleven is C H S D A twenty twenty-five Legislative Session Recap. That is a Zoom call. Thursday, June twenty-sixth through the twenty.
Back up a little bit.
Sure. Through the, uh, on the twenty-fourth.
Yes, please. Cause we also have a ten o'clock, uh, opioid settlement.
Yeah.
Reviews.
And what do we decide? You and I are going to that?
Uh, no, I'm on the Zoom call and you.
You and I are doing the opioids, it'll be in here.
I think I have.
Yeah.
Um, and then Thursday, June twenty-sixth through the twenty-seventh, you guys are at the Joke Energy Symposium in Rifle Cove. And that finishes out our June.
That June nineteenth, uh, the offices closed?
Yeah, thank you. June nineteenth, and we are celebrating, um, Juneteenth, so all of our administrative offices will be closed. Towards emergency services first.
In the first part of July, on the first, we have our next regularly scheduled B O C C meeting. Uh, and Friday, June, or July fourth is a holiday.
Are we gonna reschedule the tire shredding thing, whatever?
You know, I put a call into Chris and I haven't heard back.
Did they ever get fired, Deb?
Never get the machine, other than the engine, they never got the machine running. They finally gave up on it, and that was also a, was that a Swedish or a Finnish machine?
Finnish.
Finnish machine. That's another good reason to keep American-made, American serviced. Not that they don't have troubles, but she might, dealing with overseas vendors is a little difficult.
Is there anything else for the schedule, gentlemen, that we missed?
See anything through the first week in July?
Thank you, Lindsey.
Please join us for the new test one.
Oh, yeah. Be there.
Uh, we'll go ahead and do jail reports. Jail report from Sheriff Taylor, Sunday, June eighth, twenty twenty-five, Delta County Detention Facility Population Account Report. Male inmates, County Jail thirty-four, female inmates, County Jail seven. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, eight, female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, total of fifty-one. Average daily inmate population for the week of June two through June eight, twenty twenty-five is fifty-nine point three two. Or Sunday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report. Male inmates, County Jail thirty-four, female inmates, County Jail six. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, eight, female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, total of fifty. Average daily inmate population for the week of June nine through June fifteen, twenty twenty-five was fifty-six point two three. Seeing no other business before the board this morning, we are going to recess until ten a.m. Thank you, Angela. Well, it is ten o'clock. Uh, welcome to the Delta County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, it's time for planning. Uh, obviously, we've got full room with some very heated things to discuss today. Uh, like I said, we will start with, um, the Bear Minor Subdivision, or is that what it is? And I'll turn it over to Mr. Gardner, Planning Director.
So yes, the first application is Project twenty-four five, the Bear Minor subdivision, Bear. And, um, it's just an acceptance of it right away. So the application is real simple. It's a two-lot, you know, subdivision. Lot one is five and a half acres approximately, lot two, one point one six. And then that little red strip that's at the bottom there is the, um, right-of-way dedication point zero two acres along B Road. And that's it, really, so, um, just recommend that you accept the, the issue in right of way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything to add to this?
No, um, and this was answered before, but I just wanted to get it in the recording that all the existing irrigation water easements and public utility easements, that the county will honor those, you know? Cause the, you know, electricity and water and all that comes through that ten feet, so just so for all communicating, so that's all I have.
Questions on this, commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
And I'll note for the record that County Attorney John Bear has recused himself from this due to a personal relationship with his brother here, so.
I feel for you.
Which one are you talking to?
It's in your district.
I will make the motion that we approve, um, Project twenty-four S O five, accepting a dedication of right-of-way to Delta County for B Road. An amount of zero point zero two acres as public road, property is located on the north side of B Road in Delta.
I second that.
Righteous charity sign.
And authorized charity sign.
I second that.
And we do have that by here.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done. Go ahead, Sean.
All right, the second project is, uh, Project twenty-two sixty-six. Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
Thank you.
Mr. Brock is here with us.
And I will recuse myself.
Okay. Right. Um, Mr. Brock has requested amendments be made to the conditions of his conditional use permit for an event venue. There's four requests. Has four requests to modify dust mitigation plan, to extend the hours, remove, um, the planned RV bookups, and to remove approximately half the properties from the permit. This is a aerial map of the, um, property. And it's about a mile and a half south of Delta. I think most of you are familiar with it. It, it has been subdivided into two parcels, a thirty-six acre and a thirty-eight or thirty-nine acre parcel. So, Prok investment owns both these parcels. They were originally combined as a seventy-six acre parcel. The previously combined seventy-six acre parcel was permitted as an event venue under the twenty-one land use code and made subject ten conditions recorded in Resolution twenty twenty-four R seven on May fifth of last year. I'll, um, we'll just go through the requests one by one. I'll provide some staff comments regarding the one. The first, uh, request is dust mitigation. Currently, um, the permit permits, uh, dust control with crushed asphalt. The applicant would like to add the use of water and mac chloride. Um, neither engineering nor environmental health had any opposition to this. In fact, environmental health did a little review of a CSU, um, in- environmental impact study on mac chloride, cause there were some concerns by uh, some of the neighbors of the use of mac chloride in close proximity to the irrigation ditch, but um, environmental health provided a letter accepting the use of mac chloride in this situation. Uh, the second request is the extension of hours. Um, the current permit, um, restricts outside activity after nine P M. Um, the request is to, uh, extend the hours to, uh, to reflect music and serving drinks shall conclude no later than twelve A M. And no out- outside activity after ten P M. So, that's the request. Um, with regard to the change of hours, just have a couple of comments regarding um, noise regulations in the land use code under chapter two, section three. Um, it says amplified noise shall not operate outdoors between the hours of nine P M. One day at eight A M. of the next day or ten A, ten P M. on Fridays and Friday or Saturday. Unless there is a minimum of six hundred feet from the neighboring residence. The venue is over eight hundred feet from the nearest resident. So, in this case, those constraints wouldn't apply because they meets the distance requirement. Then there's also, um, the noise regulations under, uh, the state statute that says that the, uh, noise levels radiating from a property, so the property line of the, the venue property at a distance of twenty-five feet or more, uh, therefrom can't exceed fifty-five decibels in the daytime hours from seven A M. to seven P M. And can't exceed, uh, fifty decibels in the nighttime hours from seven P M. to seven A M. So, these are, these are constraints, you know, on, on noise. Those are the only comments I had, you know, about the change of hours. Uh, third request is to remove RV hookups from the plan for RV spaces. So, the original, uh, permit permitted the use of, of the park, ten parking areas for RVs to stay overnight. And the original, um, septic system design accommodated that use because there was an intention to connect it to infrastructure for water and sewer and electric. Um, but the, uh, Mr. Prok would like to remove it from the plan. He's no longer gonna provide RV hookups. He will allow RVs to come and stay the night there, but not necessarily provide hookups for him. There's really nothing in the current permit that explicitly says that, that there was this intention to have hookups except for the septic system design. And so, that's that request. The fourth request is the, um, one that have a bit more to say something about. Um, it's, the request is to remove thirty-six point one-five acres from the approximately seventy-six acres um, that are, they were subject, are subject, uh, to the conditional use permit. This requirement or an amendment to this, that, that we're here today carrying on was precipitated during the review of a subdivision application that Mr. Prok has into our department. To, to subdivide this thirty-six point one-five acres into, uh, an eight-lot subdivision. They, that, like I showed in this couple of slides before, the, um, property, the thirty-six point one-five acres already been split off for the purpose of developing this residential subdivision. Um, the subdivision itself, which is being planned, just for your information, it only takes up about twelve and a half of those that thirty-six acres. Um, that application had been suspended until a new resolution approving this request that amendment is approved by Commissioners. Or in the case that it's not approved, then we'll take another route. Uh, Mr. Prok's request for an amendment should have come, um, before the Commissioners, probably several months ago, as the first step in his plan to subdivide and develop half of the subject property into a clustered subdivision. This skip step has resulted in a cascade of actions without proper approval or permits. Various county departments have been tangled up in and contributed to the disorderly development for a number of months. Insufficient advice, unhelpful procedures that we have, uh, turnover of staff and constant changes also in the developers' plans have all exacerbated and sort of obscured the situation. Till it finally came to light and was brought here for correction. Full report and explanation of the events are in your packets. Um, I want to ensure that Commissioners' consideration of the request is informed by everything that has already occurred before making its decision. But for the sake of time, I won't recite anything in the report unless you wish for me to.
We've read it.
Okay, and I'll answer any questions about those events if you have any. I'll just summarize, um, here, um, I can go back in slides. Uh, the situation for now by saying that, uh, an error was made. Uh, developing half the property into residential subdivision has been the owner's intention since at least August of twenty-four because he had frequent meetings with our department discussing lot and road configurations and such, and we're you know, entertaining those with them and trying to give them direction on what would be permissible and so forth. The requirement to first obtain approval to remove half the property from conditional use permit, unfortunately, it was not addressed in any writing anywhere that I could find. So skipping this step again resulted in some actions without, you know, proper approval. Some of those things that have taken place, um, as a result are that, again, the, the thirty-six acres, uh, to the north was legally subdivided uh, from the seventy-six acres in December last year. You can do thirty-five split under state statute without, you know, need to involve about that. And, um, the eight-lot subdivision has been applied for, it's been suspended, like I said, until this is a conditional use uh, permit amendment is approved. Um, some of the things that have taken place, yeah, uh, it's subdivided into two parcels. There's actually a house that's being built, uh, with an A D U on that northern parcel. Uh, an unpermitted septic system has been constructed for the house. And a road has been constructed and named for the proposed eight-lot subdivision uh, that has the application and the review. Um, and then that road that, uh, comes from Testman to the venue was, uh, renamed fifteen eighty road and the venue buildings have been readdressed. So, these are some of the things that have taken place as a result of the splitting of the property. Last thing I kind of have to say is, uh, public comments, some of the public comments that we've received and just the summary of them. Several commented about how in the, uh, business plan and public hearings that there was commitment to the seventy, seventy acres of the seventy-six acres remaining in agricultural use. Um, there was concern about the four-bedroom residence, uh, that's being built on that, uh, northern parcel. Uh, not being included in, uh, original notices or site plans for the conditional use permit. But if it is allowed to be split off in, from the conditional use permit, it's not a problem because you can build your first house and make it parcel without a site plan review and it would pertain to that parcel. There was also concern about mag chloride use on the road next to the irrigation dishes, which we addressed by getting environmental help to do the review and provide their comment and they approved of that use. Uh, then there was a comment also about the ninety-degree corner at the site entrance being damaged and appearing wet. I subsequently learned that, that county had to do some sort of repair across the road there and they used a lot of mag chloride over the top of the repair area and made it look wet. That's my understanding of what was going on there. There's also, um, comments about the thought that there should be a revised traffic study before further development. Of course, this is kind of trying to keep this hearing about the amendment to the conditional use permit, not necessarily the subdivision, but that comment relates more to the subdivision, which we will address when that time comes, if it comes. And then, uh, concerns over, uh, the, also the aggregate, um, quantity of affluent from the aggregate septic systems on the whole seventy-six acre, um, property. The idea here is there's, uh, there's, uh, something written into the resolution about the two thousand gallon per day limit for all, um, aggregate septic systems on a parcel owned by a single owner. This is state thing, but that new septic system was put in for that house is on another parcel. And so, it's not really subject to this, this two thousand gallon per day, uh, criteria. And lastly, there was concerns about noise from the venue at the, uh, P C hearing that we had for this amendment request. Um, the Planning Commission, um, ended up recommending unanimously that the Board of County Commissioners adopt an amended resolution, um, rescinding the old resolution and finding that the proposed event venue as designed and conditioned meets all applicable standards of the twenty-one uh, land use code and conditionally approving, um, P L N twenty-two, sixty-six Prok as an event venue, um, in the thirty-five, E thirty-five zoning designation located southeast of Testman Road. That's it.
Any questions for Sean before we? No, I, I, I would just like to say thank you for the time you spent putting this report together. It's very, very thorough and, uh, covers a lot of ground for sure, but, uh, I know it took you a lot of time and effort to get it to this point, so thanks for doing that. Mr. Prok, would you like to join us?
Sure.
Sean had a very thorough review there, plus his written report provided to us. Is there anything you'd like to add to this? Remember, we're just considering the four amendments to the resolution.
Correct. No, I don't think I have anything to add. Just really that I tried to do everything as transparent as we could and, and going through and we just, you know, it was recommended by staff that I, I separate that property and do it that way. And I think it'll work, work best for everything in the future.
Um, obviously, you've been through number of different issues here trying to get this sorted out, so.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you sticking with it. Um, and I'm gonna keep my comments to these four issues here also today.
Correct.
Very good. Um, we're gonna open it up for public comment here. When we're done, we'll ask you to see if you can address any of the issues that might come forward.
That'll be great. Thank you.
So, um, we're gonna open this up for public comment. Mostly people here vindicated are here for the, um, the trademark issue. Does anybody here like to visit with Commissioners for, um, uh, the Prox subdivision here? The resolution, Mr. Hayes. Please come and address or introduce yourself and where you live. Um,
Ron Hayes. Twenty-one fifty-three Testman Road, Delta. All I'm concerned with is the county doing things right. Um, there's been a lot of stuff done wrong out there. And, uh, I'm in a position where unfortunately I get to see it. And I don't like that. I wish I could pick up and move, to be honest with you, but I can't. But it's been a fight the whole deal. Um, number one, the roads, gotta cut the dust. Put the mag chloride down, you know, if there's enough to put on that road cut that the county did to, to do that whole road, but the dust this weekend was, was bad from the events. Um, the camping? Cool, don't do it. That way he doesn't have to follow lodging taxes and get it rezoned maybe because of the commercial, but we don't need camping spots up there anyway with that many houses in the area. And as far as the hours concerned, why would we amend the new land use codes? It says in there nine o'clock, and that's what a lot of work went into that. I know because I was on the Board of Adjustment at that time and I have since resigned due to conflicts of interest. But, um, yeah, I was in that process and why change something with the first one that comes up, you know? All the other stuff probably falls under the subdivision, but, uh, that's pretty much about the, those four things. Um, just to put a bug in your ear, Snafflebit Sub, uh, Snafflebit Station subdivision, the, in two thousand and three, the Planning Commission took twelve spots out of that subdivision due to, uh, the roads and such, and nothing's changed since then, except things have gotten worse. Uh, Mesa Crest subdivision filled up with those forty homes and Snafflebit has all sold. Um, so all of the, all of the lots around there are, are taken. There's a lot of, so thus a traffic survey wouldn't be a bad thing, I think.
Mr. Hayes, let's keep our comments to the issues at hand though.
That's what I said, so.
Yep. And have you turned in your written comments? If not, we, they.
We have copies made, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here to comment today, Commissioners? There are none.
How you doing?
Good morning. Please introduce yourself.
Uh, Danny Shupner, and I live on the corner of Testman and the new road there, so, um, in regards to moving the time, I personally hear the noise up there and so does my father-in-law, who lives, um, probably another half mile in the subdivision, the other neighbors at two o'clock in the morning. Parties are going on there. There's, there's times, we seen one time the Penciata or something, they didn't get there till nine o'clock. They're moving their stuff up there and they run late. And, and that's, and, uh, in regards to the subdivision that he's gonna put in, I just have a question. There's lot number one.
Let, let's keep our.
Okay, okay. I'm not very good at this.
That'll come out at a later date.
I'm shaking right now. Hey, I don't like talking to people. You know, so, um, I guess that I don't think you should move the time because there is, you know, and then I got two neighbors that are to the south of me and their wives want to move because of this. Because of the subdivision, which I don't want to talk about, but, you know, they're looking at selling their houses. I don't know that that's right. That was, you know, they built their dream house there and, and the other one doesn't want to move, so that's, um, I guess that's about all I got to say, you know, it's, it's not very transparent, you know? The, the whole situation, I think. I don't think I, I think I was kind of deceived in the whole situation, so. That's all I got to say. Thank you for your comments, so. Anyone else this morning?
Seeing none, we're gonna close the, um, public comment here. Mr. Prok, you have anything to add during those two comments, if about the hours of operation?
No. I mean, the real, the real change for us isn't really the hours of operation, it's just the time that, that people can be out. just the time that, that people can be outside. And in the, these summer months, it's so nice that people want to enjoy the outside and be out there, and so that's why we asked basically until ten o'clock is when sundown is, and to be able to use that outside then. We're still, even though people are outside, and that's only a change, we're still limited by the noise levels at the property line and still are, are governed by that. So regardless of if people are outside or not, doesn't matter if it's five o'clock in the afternoon, but they still can't be loud to bother neighbors, so.
But being on the hill that way, that does broadcast easily to your neighbors.
Right, yeah, I think we're just far enough, we're quite way south, um, especially with Danny, that, and then all of our stuff is south of the building, and so there's really nothing on the north end of it, other than, you know, people driving in and out.
Anything else, Commissioner?
I don't know what you think, Mr. Prock.
Thank you, Mr. Prock, thank you. Sean, anything else here?
Um, I'll just, uh, say that all of these amendments are really adjustments to the proposed and submitted business plan. That's where they are reflected. The one with regard to the hours of operation is stated as music and serving drinks shall conclude no later than twelve AM. In addition, pursuant to land use code, there shall be no outside activity after ten PM. The, um, in the land use code, under special events, um, standards, it says amplified noise shall not operate outdoors between the hours of nine PM of one day and eight, eight AM of the next day, or ten PM on Friday or Saturday, unless there's a minimum of six hundred feet from neighboring residents.
Well, the dust control, removing the RV parking spots and removing the thirty-six point one five acres from the conditional use permit all makes sense to me for amendment. John, you're looking at me. What do you think?
Well, here's the concern that, that I would have, is that this is at least the third time that this development has been back for, it could be the fourth, or at least three. And so I think that there's a certain amount of free machine freedom that's going on here. Now, if that is, if that is strictly for the purposes of aligning business plan with reality of words, that's fine. The removal of, of the thirty-six acres or whatever it is, half, half of the seventy acres. And Sean, I'm assuming that was done through a, just a, a split through presumptively an exception to the subdivision code, through a statutory exception?
Yes, yeah, the thirty-five.
Thirty-five. I mean, that's, that's a concern. I mean, maybe I'm not even speaking legally, so I need to be, to be careful. I, I'm, I'll make a, I'll make a presumption without, without making a legal judgment, that that is allowed, uh, although that property was possibly constrained by limited use permit, conditional use permit, whatever situation is here. Um, I'll make a presumption without doing any research that, that is still allowed, even if property is constrained by another development. But it's concerning. That's, you know, so, in, I guess I'm concerned that the development, I mean, this is again the third time or the fourth time we've been, I don't know, at least three, in two years, and we've been back for this board to change things, and subdivision right on the backside of this. Those are, those concerning that we don't have a development that is presented that the board can make a decision on, leaving the entirety of these pieces piecemeal. This is not a decade later, or fifteen years later, or twenty years later, the world's changing, this is within a couple of years. Those are concerns of mine. I don't know, there's a lot of legality in there, but those are, those are concerning. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anything else?
You know, I, I agree with John and a lot of that stuff, but we have, you know, we were looking at forty pages here in the staff report, uh, very well presented, very well thought out, and, uh, they have to limit the conversation today to four items on page two. To be quite honest, is a little frustrating, because there's, there's been reading through this the last several days, you know, there's been several carts that have gotten before the horse, if we'll use that term, and, um, you know, we're, we're kind of off limits to talk about some of that stuff, or make decisions in regards to some of that stuff because of the request of, of the day. And you're right, it just seems a little frustrating that we can't look at the bigger picture and just kind of clean this up and, and tidy it up and, and move forward in a faster manner, but I think this is all gonna be coming back in a, you know, a few months when we get to the next step, but to limit the conversation today to these four items, in my view, is a little frustrating, but having said that, um, yeah, I agree with, with what you guys are talking about here with the removal of the RV hookups, um, the dust mitigation with mag chloride, crushed asphalt, water if need be in a pinch, and then the removal of half from the limited use permit from the last go-around. You know, Mr. Prock, you probably should have known better to, you know, start some of this stuff, but that's, that's a topic for another day. Um, the, the item before us is these four items, and so my only concern would be the hours of operation. Um, I would like to stick to the nine PM closure, um, and allow the, the, uh, the Friday and Saturday night portion to be what is stated in the land use code and, and not change that one, because I think that's gonna open up a, a can of worms in the future, because if you say one yes to somebody, you gotta pretty much say yes to everybody else, so. I understand there's, the, the distances are, are met, but, um, again, noise travels, and I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable extending those hours. But the other three items, um, I think we're good with at this point, and again, I would sure wish there was a way we could, uh, kill more birds with this one stone than we're, than we're doing, but this seems to be the way we have to go today, so that's the end of my comments.
I'm gonna step down and make the motion. I move that the county amends the limited use permit for PLN twenty-two zero six-six for resolution twenty-three R zero zero eight to amend for dust control as noted, remove the ten RV sites, and remove the thirty-six point one five acres from the limited use permit. That should do it.
And limit the hours of operation.
The hours of operation will stay as, uh, originally stated.
I will second that motion.
If I can just jump out, I'm looking at the draft resolution, and it has language about rescinding resolution twenty-four R most six, zero, zero seven. Um, that really should be amending that rather than rescinding it, so just, just a little bit of housekeeping there, so, so maybe we could work with money and make sure that language gets changed, so.
Thank you. Duly noted. Call in favors.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Mr. Prock, you are hearing quite a bit of frustration with your neighbors there about long-range planning for this, for this property and this venue. I thoroughly encourage you to be as transparent and upfront with your neighbors as you can be, um, to do the things you wish to do on your private property, so that, um, conflict is minimized. And do understand that the, putting a venue like this in residential area has impacts. Thank you for being here today. We're gonna take just a couple of minutes for a comfort break, and then we'll come back with, um, the trademark issue. Thank you. We are going to reconvene here. This is project twenty-four zero seven-one Trademark Construction LLC. Mr. Gardner?
Yes, uh, project twenty-four seventy-one. The applicant is, uh, Jim Barnard, and his wife are here. He's the managing member of Trademark Construction LLC, and would like to create a five-lot subdivision from, um, lot three of the Biscuit Minor subdivision. It's approximately a nine and a half acre lot. Currently, the, um, the lot is vacant. Um, the subject property is located about, looks like, about a half mile directly north of Cedar Ridge with signage on twenty-three twenty-five road. It is zoned res one, as it is within the growth management area of the town of Cedar Ridge. Um, here's a shot of the preliminary plot, kind of how the lots layout. Lots, uh, lot sizes would range from one point eight-two to two point oh-five acres. There is a little right-of-way dedication of point zero eight acres along twenty-three twenty-five road, about a ten-foot wide strip. Access to, um, well, access from twenty-three twenty-five road currently exists to lot three of the subdivision. This will be vacated for the proposed resubdivision, and all new lots, lots one through five, will be accessed through a new private access easement ending in the cul-de-sac to be named, and it is, that cul-de-sac comes right through the, the middle of, uh, where the three are top and the two is bottom, you can't see it really well, unless you're looking.
It's on our map, yeah.
Okay, good. The road will be gravel, but will be subject to a pre-annexation agreement with town Cedar Ridge to be paved at some time after annexation. Domestic water, there is one existing tap from the town of Orchard City for lot three of the Biscuit Minor subdivision, and, uh, the board of trustees for the town of Orchard City approved four additional taps on December eleventh of last year at a regular town meeting. So there are water taps for all five lots, secure. Um, there are no current septic systems on, on the lot. Um, there is some concern about septic systems, uh, in the, because of the soil condition of the property. Colorado Geological Survey has been, has submitted a letter, um, with no objections to the approval, but some recommendations for concrete tanks to be used in septic, uh, system construction. The applicant has also had an independent professional engineer out to dig some test pits and do some soil analysis, analysis around the property, that he can speak to if you have questions about that. Irrigation water, there is no irrigation water allotted for any of the lots. At the, uh, planning commission hearing, there were several, uh, topics discussed. Um, the main objection of, uh, the, the neighbors and the other lot owners in the Biscuit Minor subdivision is an appeal to the restrictions and, uh, covenants for the subdivision, to which we have consistently replied that we don't interpret or apply, um, covenants, uh, covenants. But, uh, there are also concerns about septic systems being installed and affluent leaching into groundwater or adjacent properties. But of course, uh, all septic systems in Delta County have to be designed by a professional engineer and inspected by the health department. There's also a concern about water supply, since the area has experienced restrictions in the past on water, um, domestic water and irrigation water, so there's concerns about there not. the property. Colorado Geological Survey has submitted a letter with no objections to the approval but some recommendations for concrete tanks to be used in septic system construction. The applicant has also had an independent professional engineer out to dig some test pits and do some soil analysis, analysis around the property that he can speak to if you have questions about that. Irrigation water, there is no irrigation water allotted for any of the lots. At the Planning Commission hearing, there were several topics discussed. The main objection of the neighbors and the other lot owners in the Biscuit Minor Subdivision is an appeal to the restrictions and covenants for the subdivision, to which we have consistently replied that we don't interpret or apply covenants, bad covenants. But there are also concerns about septic systems being installed and affluent leaching into groundwater or adjacent properties. But of course, all septic systems in Delta County have to be designed by a professional engineer and inspected by the health department. There's also a concern about water supply since the area has experienced restrictions in the past on water, domestic water and irrigation water. So there's concerns about there not being enough water for the subdivision. But again, the town of Orchard City has approved taps for all five lots. And the irrigation, water supply being restricted and there being no irrigation water supplied to all the lots has been a concern for people with regard to fire mitigation since the property will be presumably very dry. Irrigation lines are another primary concern of neighboring residents. There are two major irrigation pipelines that run down 2325 Road that you have to cross over to get into the lot. They're buried, but they are, I don't know, there's concern about their depth, the clients being able to withstand, you know, the, an access built over the top of them. And then there is a, actually a pipe that comes up out of one of those, I think Boyd Ditch, isn't it? That comes down and it services water, irrigation water to the lot to their south. And so that's above ground right now and would have to be dealt with to form the access, proposed access for the subdivision. These matters were all discussed in the neighborhood meeting, in the PC meeting. The applicants have, you know, direct communication with the irrigation ditch managers for both of the irrigation ditches concerned and are working out solutions for how to mitigate, getting across with the access onto the property. The Planning Commission had two motions. The first motion was to approve, and there were two yeses and five nays. And since that didn't pass, they did a second motion, which was to deny. And then there was a unanimous vote of denial, recommendation of denial to the commissioners. Although the PC recommends denial, staff finds that Project 2471 to be consistent with the applicable policies of the 2018 master plan and that it complies with the recommended other requirements of the 2024 Land Use Code for a preliminary plat. Therefore, we're recommending approval for a project subject to the conditions that are in your packet. So our recommendations for the commissioners would be to define Project 2471 Trademark Construction is consistent with applicable policies. 2018 master plan complies with the requirements of 24 Land Use Code for preliminary plat and conditionally approve 2471 Trademark to subdivide the nine and a half acres in Res One zoning district into five lots.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean?
No, good presentation. Thank you.
Again, thank you for all the work you guys put into this. The last one was 40 pages, this one's 51, so that indicates that you guys are doing a lot of, a lot of homework, so.
Is Mr. Bernard here? Would you care to join us, sir? Is there anything you would like, Mr. and Mrs.? Anything you can add to the discussion so far for clarity?
Just for me, I guess I would say that I would hope that today, the evidence that I have complied with Land Use Code and followed step-by-step everything that's been put before me to move forward with the subdivision, I, I have done what I've been asked to do and that that would be what you guys make the decision about. There will be a lot of opinions of whether I should or should not from the neighbors. I understand that. But just from what I was given to do to be able to comply and to move forward, I believe that I have accomplished that.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take public comment here in a minute. And then we'll ask you to address some of these comments if they're substantial.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up for public comment. When you do come up, please address the board here and keep your comments to the topic at hand. We are looking for good substantial comments, things that will help us make a very tough decision here. Do note that, as Mr. Gardner stated, the county does not have jurisdiction over HOAs or covenants nor over domestic water. That is, that is beyond our, that's overreached by government. We don't, we don't do that. Having said that, if you, if you, somebody else has covered a topic that you'd like to address, just let us know that you agree with the previous commenter. And I will go in order of those who had signed up. So Joseph, is it Kearns?
This is our liquor license.
Oh, that was his liquor license. Thank you. Shelley DeConish. Good morning.
Good morning.
Is that one?
And we just need your name and address for the record.
Yes. Can you guys, that sounds good, right? Good morning, Chairman Koots and Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to hear us today. My name is Shelley DeConish. I'm an attorney with Dufford Waldeck Law in Grand Junction. I represent Rhonda Hyman, Bradley Martin, and Bobby Hansford, who are the owners of Lots One and Two in Biscuit Subdivision. I'm speaking on their behalf today, but not in lieu of them. They still want the opportunity to address you some matters that are just a little different than what I'm going to speak to. We sent a letter that I believe is in your packet, so I'm not gonna, you know, out of respect for your time, I'm not going to go through all the things in that letter, just want to highlight a few of the major concerns that the Biscuit subdivision lot owners have, the other lot owners. One is that, and I know, I understand that you're not going to interpret the CCNRs, that you see that that's the role of a court and it's a civil matter, and I understand that. However, I do think you can consider that as part of the character of the surrounding area. The CCNRs create a nice common and general plan of development for the Biscuit subdivision, and this proposed subdivision doesn't meet it or preserve it. For example, the common plan includes shared accesses and irrigation facilities and how those will be maintained jointly by the various lot owners. None of that is respected or addressed by this proposed subdivision. It creates a large lot residential and rural ag subdivision, and this, the character of the subdivision will be quite different from that. It'll be more of a smaller lot residential, more dense area. And the proposed density also, in addition to not really matching the, the covenants and the plan for this subdivision, doesn't really match the surrounding area. Those are also larger lots with homes or agricultural uses. As you go farther out, there is more density, but in this area, it's actually quite large lots, and my clients are very concerned that this will change the character of the area prematurely and that it's not an orderly plan for development of this rural area. There are concerns about the septic systems as Mr. Gardner pointed out. We would request that if you do approve this, that as a condition of the approval, you, you ask the developer to comply with the Colorado CGS comments, just to make sure that there are no adverse impacts, unnecessary adverse impacts on the neighbors and also on the lots within their own subdivision, if they do subdivide it. There is some likelihood that an insufficiently designed septic system could harm other people's property. My clients also feel, and I do as well, that there's insufficient protection of the irrigation facilities, the underground pipes there. This subdivision will make those pipes harder and more expensive to maintain, which implicates the St. Jude's case and the tenants of law, so forth and that. It will likely lead to litigation, so we would like the Board of County Commissioners to deny this, this subdivision based on that as well. I also noticed that your land use code requires, I believe it's Chapter Four, Section Three, subsection G, I think, requires for development plans and plats to show for irrigation facilities who the beneficiaries are, and that is not made very clear on this plan. And we're concerned that some of the easement beneficiaries may not even be aware that their rights are going to be impacted. Insufficient water with no irrigation water, this may result in some unkempt and very dry residential lots, not consistent with what is there now, and that they will over time not be well-maintained and that will degrade the, the nice character of this area and this neighborhood. They're also concerned about scenic and wildlife and insufficient protection for those. It's a, it's quite a wildlife corridor. And they're concerned that, of course, you know, each home will put up six-foot privacy fences and the wildlife will not be able to go through, and this will also impact people's views and their, the very open rural character of the area. The planning.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Yes, sorry. I'm not very good with microphones. The Planning Commission recommended denial unanimously, I think recognizing these things that I just mentioned. And the Biscuit subdivision owners and I respectfully request that you deny the application as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Bradley Call. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I thank you for this opportunity.
Could you identify yourself?
Yes. My name is Dale Bradley Call. I live at 18314 2325 Road, which is directly across from the property in question. And although there are a number of issues as has been brought up concerning the, this property, my main concern is with regard to my property value. We have lived there for 23 years now. Our home is paid for and I'm pending on this as part of my estate, part of, part of being able to maintain. I'm retired and I'm not able to work and older. And so I recently checked the value of my home and it's, it's, makes me feel secure. It's, it's good, but with the construction of these smaller homes in the area, it's definitely going to decrease the property values, including mine, which is going to affect my estate and potentially my future. And so this is my main concern. I know there are others, but I don't want to take up too much time, but this is what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurie Olsen. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lori Olsen. I live right next door to the proposed development on 18299 2325 Road. My north fence and my west fence will border the five-house subdivision. And as everyone stated, there are many concerns. We feel like there are covenants for the Biscuit subdivision, of which I'm not a part of, I'm a separate thing, but there's covenant issues, there are, we had a 50 signature petition that we gave to the Planning Commission, 50 people, neighbors in our neighborhood that were against this subdivision. But I guess my main concern this morning, again, not to take up too, too much time, is to talk about water issues. Since February 19th, the High Country Spotlight has an article nearly every month on lack of water. February 19th, Orchard City discusses water tap moratorium. March 19th, Orchard City meeting, water situations take precedence. I won't read you all the things in the, in the articles themselves. April 2nd, water outlook, early spring update. Orchard City Board of Trustees, water issues, several issues discussed, declared a critical water supply shortage by reason of drought and setting mandatory water conservation measures, and on and on. The most recent I have is June 4th, Orchard City declares water shortage conservation measures begin June 1st. Critical water shortage due to ongoing drought conditions. And I know that the five taps have been approved, but nonetheless, we're all under restrictions. It's, it's not a time to put in five houses in that neighborhood. And I, I just feel like we're, you know, we all work hard to prioritize water usage for the agricultural needs of our county and our residential areas need to be real careful. We're very careful about our water usage. And adding five more homes with the potential of 20 more people moving in there, four people per household, could be 20 people moving in there with laundry and lawns and.
You understand, we do not regulate water.
Okay. That's fine.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but.
No, I understand, but, but the, but the concern is even if you don't regulate it, you can certainly be aware of the issue that with five houses and 20 more people potentially, it could be a very difficult time while we're in the drought situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Daryl Olsen. Rhonda Hyman?
My name is Rhonda Hyman, and I live on Lot Two, which I will be looking at five homes now. He will block my views to the San Juans. I will not have dark skies anymore. I will not have a quiet atmosphere anymore. This is, we bought this property eight years ago, and the first thing I did was check covenants to see, you know, what's allowed, what's not allowed, you know, so I could blend in with the community. And then now I have this and five homes. He knew exactly what he was buying when he purchased this property. The kids that owned it before him, they were going to build one house, one address. They were going to put a couple cows, some chickens, you know. You couldn't have surprised me more if you would have said he was building a Walmart. You might as well, because our area is extremely quiet, extremely peaceful, and I just, the water restrictions, I know you don't want to know about it, but the last restrictions we had, well, this year it's even more severe, and they had, Orchard City had to go outside and lease water for one year to even get a supply for us now without having five more houses added to our neighborhood. And then you, you've got the noise, you've got the wildlife, we've got the deer and elk that come through. You put five houses in there? Okay, where is it going to push the deer and the elk? We have at least 40 had of deer who live in this area. They go, oh, they'll figure it out. And the DOW, they, they gave recommendations to not blocking the corridor. Okay, these, these families move in with children and pets. Okay, are they going to keep their animals and kids on their properties? I know you, it, it doesn't affect you, but it sure affects the rest of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Brad Martin. Larry and Amy Etheridge.
I'll just be real quick. My name's Larry. Larry Etheridge, 18402 2325 Road, just kind of across the street in Catacoria a little bit. I just agree with everything that's been said here, and my biggest concern again, from my perspective is my property value. I don't want starter homes being built in an area that has really nice established homes and drive my property value down. I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Weisner?
I'm Heidi Weisner. I live at 1010 Southeast Deer Creek Drive in Cedar Ridge, but my horses live on Lot One. At first, I want to say, I understand that there are some issues that you don't enforce, but you are the Delta County Commissioners, so you are our Commissioners, whether we're Orchard City or Cedar Ridge or Hotchkiss or whatever. So those issues are all important to us, and you should hear them, including water. My concern is the same as everyone else's, but I, I do have a question. But I I do have a question on if the town of Cedar Edge denies the pre-annexation, what happens? I'd like to know the answer to that. As a former trustee in Cedar Edge, I don't see any incentive for the town to approve a pre-annexation agreement. One, I think it would interfere with their development plans, plopping five homes onto one lot. And anyway, I don't see any incentive for that. But another concern is, again, all of the homes, and nobody's mentioned it at all, is runoff from from all of that. And where's that going to go? It's going to go into the field where my horses eat. And I don't appreciate that. I don't know what's going to run off in there. Is there going to be fertilizer in that runoff? It's, you know, I don't know. So anyway, I just I think the planning commission made the right decision, and you guys should do. Thanks.
Thank you. Bobby Hansford.
My name's Bobby Hansford. I live at two three zero eight six Sweet Clover Road, which is lot two, or lot one, rather. I moved to the area for the quiet and for the openness and for the privacy. He keeps talking about across the road, there's a development. Yes, across the road, there is a development. The west side of the road has been farmland. Those of us that live there have acreage that we have for ourselves, for privacy and and our own taking care of. I've seen a hundred elk go through there, right through the pet place he's building. We offered, we said we would take three houses in there. He refuses to cooperate. I just I hate to see what's happening. And with the water situation right now, I've let half my lawn die the last time we had the drought. I'm only trying to save trees, and I've already had a two-hundred-dollar water bill. I just I don't get it. We don't have enough water for those of us that here, but they keep bringing in more taps. That's all I've got. I just that's it.
Thanks, Bobby. Ty Williams.
Hello, my name's Ty Williams. Address is fourteen ninety-six Northwest Cedar. We don't live adjacent to the property, but we do own and farm over two hundred acres of fruit that is on the Stevens Linder pipeline that has an easement through the property. We've been there for hundred and ten years plus now. Our main concern with it is we do have that easement that pre-exists the subdivision. There's a large concrete structure that's a diversion that sits right in the dead center of where the the driveway for this roadway for this subdivision is going to go. Our concern is that the only time that you can feasibly move this structure, because it would have to be moved, would fall between November one and April one. Because the other time, this time of the year, we run water in there seven days a week, and we have the right to. My biggest concern for me and my other neighbors that grow fruit there, there's approximately seven to eight million dollars worth of fruit being grown in these properties, and we can't even go without water for two or three days. So if construction were to begin and they break the pipe or they try to try to move this this structure without, you know, working with the Stevens Linder to get the thing done, it would be catastrophic. And there'd be be some very large losses. So that's that's my concern with it. And as far as I know, so we're the my family's the largest shareholders of the Stevens Linder pipeline. As far as I know, there's been no con no no attempt to to mitigate this problem with anybody in the Stevens. I think there's maybe even one one small meeting with Lyle Cooper perhaps. But there needs to be a lot of lot of thought put into how how this issue is dealt with. So I won't take up any more time. That's all I have.
Dave Meeks.
Dave Meeks, and I live in a hell, I can't even remember.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Northwest Cedar. Anyway, now we're depending on that pipeline, the Stevens Linder. That's how we irrigate. We're all sprinklers on row irrigate. And so we're depending on that. The trouble is, I was just looking at the plat map, it's going right over. You got to understand, when they put the Stevens and Linder pipeline in, we didn't have Schedule forty and stuff like that. It's just a P B C pipeline. Places it's not very deep. And on one of the one of the deals, I can't even read it, number four lot or whatever, the pipeline goes right cross-sections at Plum Cross. Look, I I we're afraid to mess with that pipeline because it's it's not round anymore, just compression and everything. It's igloo-shaped or whatever you want to call it. And you can't, I mean, I don't, we can move that road and then maybe later on this winter time, maybe move the pipeline, but we can't do it right now, that's for sure. Anyway, that's my two bits. That's all I got to say. And I mean, I'm neighbors with Williams, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sean, could you bring up the plat map?
Yeah, we do have it. It's not very good view, but...
That diagonal there across lot four, that's the Steve Linder.
That's the, yeah, that's Boyd ditch goes across, but they're talking about up front of the property around twenty-three twenty-five road.
Okay, I just want to make...
Two pipelines.
Just want to make the distinction there. Thank you. Austin Kaiser.
Can I just point out that the plat map is wrong? It shows the Boyd going diagonally across that. It does not show the Stevens and Linder, which also diagonals across. Does that... And that was not mentioned in Sean's report.
Or the twenty-five-foot easement that they have on the side of that pipe.
So that plat map is not correct.
Mr. Kaiser, would you like to address the board today? Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, my name is Austin Kaiser. I live at nine forty-seven Northwest Knight Street. I am also a shareholder in the S and L ditch system or Stevens and Linder. I only think that they I have no no other comments other than we need to take care of this irrigation system and the seniority of that easement. And I think it's in the best interest to all parties if the developer has a meeting with the S and L ditch company and and derives at a decision in writing that satisfies all of the needs of the S and L ditch company. That's my point in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Nunamaker.
Victoria Nunamaker, two-two nine-nine-five Sweet Clover Road. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Everyone has spoken about concerns that I share with them. And I feel, well, I feel there's a real serious disconnect as far as water conservation that, you know, Orchard City can approve something and no one else really knows what's going on. And you fellows don't take that at all in consideration. I don't know if that's because of state laws or how that's all, you know, set up or if it's changeable, but we're just all in the same boat. And there should be a lot more coordination and cooperation on what is our most serious issue living in the West. Also, this, you know, city of Cedar Edge wants to expand in that direction. And the fact that the west side of that road was split off to permit more construction, and from what I understand, you could actually put ten homes on that amount of acreage. And and then it leaves everyone else who's had forty acres or eighty acres or whatever of property, you know, still there, but looking, you know, like changing the whole concept of the agricultural community that we all wanted to have when we moved there. So I think that was not considered very well, how that would impact everybody. So I would I would urge you to consider the opinions of the neighbors and the people who are living there. And also, since this would be the first situation where this change of zoning has occurred, that it sets a precedent that's only going to lead to more construction in the future and more crowding on that available property. And I don't think that was really probably thought out when the city suggested, you know, parting that property and changing the zoning. So I just think caution and maybe considering that this is too much too soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim Chin.
My name is Jim Chin. I live at one seven eight six Northwest Cedar Avenue. I am on the Board of Directors of the Stevens and Linder Ditch. And there's one thing I want to emphasize before this subdivision is approved. We need to sit down with the developers and hash out an agreement, precisely what they propose to do, because this is going to be a very expensive redo of our headgate and diversion structure, as well as rerouting the the ten-inch pipes that we have. So please keep that in mind. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Nikki.
Well. I'm Nikki Sonasaka, neighbor in two three one four three Sweet Clover. I was with Mr. Backenstow when he developed that biscuit miner. He's a friend of mine, and he moved away. He had no intention for that to become so residential. I think he thought three houses per future would have been okay, but he would be very sick to think about five on that that spot. It just doesn't fit. But I appreciate you guys thinking about it. It's it's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, help if last name. Sheopanour? S E H O E P P R E R? During non-mastere land. Kristy Lavalley.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Kristy Lavalley. I live at two-two eight six six Sweet Clover Road. And I just want to point out what I've already said. The plat map is wrong. There's another ditch that goes across it, as was your staff report, who said the Boyd ditch fed properties to the south. It does not, but the Stevens and Linder does. And all the issues that they brought up for the Stevens and Linder apply to the Boyd because the Stevens and Linder and the Boyd parallel down twenty-three twenty-five road until it splits off and goes to the west. And we have the same issues with the pipe. We have, we don't have the kind of economic impact at on the Boyd that these guys do. But it's very critical that that ditch keep running. We have hay, we have horses, we have pasture, and we have to have that that ditch through the summer. And I'll just point out what else is wrong in the report. Your your planning commission said nay, and I hope you listen to that. I have all the concerns everybody else addressed. The subdivision does not fit in this area. The houses are won't be commensurate with the other houses there. If anything, our houses will raise those houses' prices, not reverse, as the builder tried to to make the case for. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Schlothter.
My name's Nisi Slater, and my property is adjacent to those five houses. So that the the, you know, the the two, what is it, four and five?
Four and five.
Yeah. My property butts right up against that. And my property is, that property is irrigation for cattle or or horses. And and I have people that have horses and cattle on it. And the second thing is, is that any, I have Steven Linder ditch. I'm one of the top ones that have to get it going so that all the rest can set theirs. And, you know, again, I've got sixty acres. I've got grass, kind of pasture grass, you know, growing. I irrigate it every month, every week, four days a week. My husband planted two hundred trees on that property. And he senses passed away, but we are trying desperately to keep those trees going, you know? And we water them, you know, like I said, every week. And I just, I am not in favor of the homes being adjacent to my property, right at where my property is. Because if anything goes wrong with the subject, be it whatever, I'm getting it. I'm downhill. So I I don't think it's the kind of property that should be developed for five homes. All of it around us is rural. And I don't know about this Cedar Ridge wanting to go, you know, claim our property or whatever, but Northwest Sage Avenue is the boundary line for Cedar Ridge. And we're very happy not being at Cedar Ridge. You know, that's that's all the the way. And and so by not wanting that and all of us, you know, working to keep our property going, because I have people in there that that pay me for pasture, et cetera, and I just don't think it's right. We're not, we're not don't need five homes there. We really don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the board that didn't get a chance to sign up?
Anybody online?
Anybody online? Thank you. We're going to close the public comment period here. Mr. Bernard, would you care to join us? We've heard a number of different issues, primarily around irrigation. That's a could be a real concern for the board here. Do you like to address that?
Yeah, it was my understanding, and it's on the plat, that we we had no intention of ever moving their concrete structure, that there's actually a right-of-way, right, Sean, on that side? It shows that the surveyor put a right-of-way for that, and our roadway is going to be offset from that, where we wouldn't affect that. We have spoken to the irrigation companies, and depending on how this meeting turned out, what we would need to move forward to, to comply with them. The access crossing those two pipelines off of twenty-three twenty-five, as even one of the neighbors had proposed, that we could go in there and case those in concrete to protect them. So yes, we do understand that there are some issues with the pipeline, and we're willing to do whatever they ask of us to protect those. And and then... And, and then as far as the, one of them had, said something about the annexation agreement. That isn't something I actually sought out. That was actually imposed on me in order to move forward and get my taps, that I would have to sign an annex agreement with the town of Cedar Ridge. So that isn't something I was pushing that was a Cedar Ridge requirement for me to move forward. And that the area that I'm proposing the five, as you can see on there, is zoned R1. So we could have sought more lots, but we weren't trying to do that. We're trying to stay commensurate with the other two acre lots that are on the other side of the road and not make it so dense.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant here?
Mr. Bernard, do you happen to have any irrigation water that you could include in this subdivision? I think that would go a long ways toward relieving some of the issues.
Yeah, there, there's one share with that property. We were just advised, because we just, I'm actually on the board of irrigation for Orchard City, or, sorry, the Orchard City Irrigation District. And there's just so many problems with small subdivisions and the water, you know, of ordering, trying to get water to each one of them. You know, that, it winds up being a very messy civil thing throughout them. And so we had opted, and we could change it if there was a better, if I could talk with somebody who could find a better way to do it. But we have one share there that's owned by the subdivision still. But I was just advised that, you know, that's kind of a, it's a tough thing to do with five lots and one share of water.
Well, you know, the last thing we want to do is put a burden on the domestic side of water that doesn't necessarily need to be there and to discourage outdoor watering as much as possible. I mean, everybody waters something outdoors. My wife's always watering her plants and her flowers and stuff. But, you know, to, to not use domestic water for those purposes is, is a huge priority, you know, especially in the climate that we're in right now. I think Colorado law stands squarely on the, on the backs of the, the farmers and the ranchers who use the water. And so I don't think there's going to be issues with, with redoing this, this as needed to make sure that those people get the water that they're, that they're entitled to, that they own. I think that's a huge thing that, that's going to be on their side squarely. I mean, you're going to have to do whatever they require of you to make sure their water flows.
Absolutely.
And if that's means additional expense, then that's what it means. But it's going to have to take place. I agree with the comment that was made about the line going through lot four. That's, that's problematic. I mean, that's, you can't expect somebody to not buy a lot and then not figure out how to use that lot when you got a, you know, an easement going across there. You know, don't, you know, put orange cones up and say, don't use anything inside of here. I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty naive to think that they're going to follow that, you know, into the future. So anything that has to do with the irrigation side of things on this whole subdivision is going to have to really be sought at and looked at closely. The domestic side, yeah, Orchard City is like the rest of us. You know, we're, we're struggling to find water, trying to keep things going. To their credit, they have purchased some, some reservoir water recently. They have a water acquisition fund that they set aside, and so they have the ability to buy water when it's available. And they jumped on an opportunity here recently. So there's, there's some additional water resources. But again, the water's only there when it's there. And so in a super dry situation, that becomes a problem as well. So that's why I'm, I'm honing in on the water here. That's, that's what I see. As I stated in the last hearing, if you guys were part of that one, it's, it's kind of frustrating to me to not be able to address more than just what's right before us today, to look at the bigger picture, to be able to not look at previous covenants and how to interpret those and what, what somebody meant when they wrote it, even though they may have wrote it inaccurately or ambiguously. I mean, some of this stuff, you read it and you go, what in the world does that even mean? And so that unfortunately falls outside of our jurisdiction, our, our discussions here today. But I want to zero in on one other thing, is the fact that this is a preliminary plat. And so we need to, we need to keep that in mind. This is not a final done deal. This is just allowing you to move forward to the next step.
Yes, sir.
And there will be more next steps that you're going to have to go through to, to get this thing over the finish line. So, yeah, this is, this is step one of multiple steps. And again, water's going to be one of the bigger ones for me. So just make sure we hammer that down tight.
Okay.
And answer all the questions now, so we're not going back and redoing things in the future.
Absolutely.
Mr. Bernard, you, when you bought the property, you realized there were covenants on the property.
Yes, sir.
That's the three houses. But you are proposing five.
Yes, sir.
While the county doesn't enforce private covenants on private subdivisions, why are you proposing five?
We, when we came across this property, we reached out, because we didn't understand what that covenant was saying precisely. So we reached out to a lawyer as well to find out what, and he had said that it was very vague and ambiguous, and that he had some past, what do you call it?
Cases.
Cases toward that same covenant had come in, and it's been a problem over the years that it could have referred to the initial purchase date of that property. And so the lot that we bought has sold multiple times in the past, since that was written in two thousand and five. And so he was saying that it could have referred to the very initial one, or it could mean all of them. He said, but that's not something, that's something that's decided civilly. It's not what one person could interpret, so.
On the irrigation, you have one share would be divided up into five people. And I agree with you, it's, only will cause problems among those five people as far as sharing the water. And I don't know how much one share divided by five is, but it might be the amount of water that comes out of a garden hose. And if somebody is not getting the right amount of water or think that they are entitled to more water, it just causes problems. And to get the water from the headgate to each one, if you do an open ditch and they have the right for water that comes out of a garden hose, which is going to dissipate even before they get to the pasture. So I kind of agree with you there that the, the irrigation water might be a good idea not to include, because it will just become lawsuit and, and neighbors fighting against neighbors. And I share water out on one place. We have one person that, by God, when they want the water, they get it. So we share it and, and, and been able to satisfy him. But I could see if something comes up, then the water isn't there. It could be not a pleasant experience. As far as getting the plat right, that's one thing that we need to do, like this says, a preliminary plat. And I think you're wise in seeking an attorney to, about the, the covenants on that. And again, the Board of County Commissioners cannot, does not have the legal authority over HOAs or water. Orchard City said okay to give the taps, so they must know more about their water system than I do, as far as the availability of water, how it's going to get there. And as like Commissioner Fuller said, they've bought some water, and it's just something that is going to have to come to pass. Just, we'll start it now.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Discussion amongst ourselves here with.
Well, you know, land use code decisions are very hard, and I take them very seriously. But everybody in this room, if you're living in a house somewhere, it was subdivided, split off from somewhere, and for you to live in it. And maybe back then, if this, the planning commissioner, the Board of County Commissioners did not approve the subdivision, the house that you live in now possibly could not have been built. And its progress, you know, obstructing your view, the irrigation, the moving of the road, those are all issues I think that so far, the applicant has said that they're willing to work with. As far as property values, who knows? One side could be better than the other side. But that is something that we
We're going to keep this to ourselves, okay? We give you guys a chance. Thank you.
That we've got to consider. But at the same time, every house that everybody's living in had to be subdivided from somewhere.
In an orderly manner.
On that.
There was a couple of comments made about the septic issues and possibility of some trouble there. But I think that's pretty much regulated by the state. And so they're not going to sign off on anything that they're not comfortable with.
And they have to be engineered.
Every, every septic system today has to be engineered, has to receive a stamp of approval.
You have that so supported, you guys would like to put it from our engineering.
So, and, and to be able to say, you know, let's, let's get that done ahead of time. That's, that's a physical impossibility, because you have to find the location of the home, the septic system, and the Leachville has to be within certain distance of that home. And so on a, on a one and a half or two acre lot, you know, you wouldn't be able to say, let's dig here and do a test here and approve that. But yet maybe the house or whatever gets put somewhere else when it actually happens, so. But just rest assured that those, those issues are looked at, they're covered, so.
For me, for this project to move forward, one, they have to have a, a written agreement with the two ditch companies, Stevens and Linder and the Boyd ditch, for the either relocation of those lines or protection of those lines, the headgate and diversion structure. I'm hearing a lot of concern over that with major shareholders there. Second, I think the applicant really needs to consider the ramifications of putting five homes on a, when it was covenants restricted to three, that's a risk they're putting themselves at. That could be a civil matter that they possibly could lose on that one.
That's, that's a gamble.
That's a risk they're running. And I think it's worth noting that this is in the urban growth area as identified by the municipality of Cedar Ridge. They want this to, they are encouraging growth close to infrastructure so that we limit sprawl out in rural parts of the county. So that's therefore the pre-annexation agreement.
I, I agree a hundred percent. I mean, the, the water has to be, number one, that has to be hammered down. That has to be taken care of with the ditch companies involved. And again, like you said, with the covenant issue, I mean, you're, you're opening yourselves up to, wide open to a lawsuit there. You got to understand that that one, that one may be coming at you and
That's the risk they think.
It's, it's very well, possibly it could go the other way, so bear that one in mind. And again, this is preliminary, so we're, we're not signing off on this. We're just giving you the green light to go to the next step. And I wish, I wish we had a way we could streamline this and just get it all done at once, but we don't have that, so.
Yeah. So what's the will of the board?
I will make a motion that we
Before we do that, Sean, John, is there anything else you want to bring to our attention?
Well, the other things that were brought up by some of the neighbors were that the remainder of the easement for the SNL was not shown on the plat. So I think that that needs to be clarified. It looks like it currently on the plat runs along twenty-three twenty-five road, but someone indicated that, that that possibly goes across part of, I don't know where it goes, somewhere, somewhere else on, on the plat as well. Definitely you spoke about the agreements with the two ditch companies, the Boyd and the Stevens and Linder. As well, there was discussion by the board, and maybe it was not consistent between Commissioner Lay and Commissioner Fuller, about what, if anything, to do with irrigation water. It seems like, at least if I heard it right, it sounds like maybe the two of you, two of you didn't totally agree on that. So I don't know what your, what your motion is going to be in regard to the irrigation water itself, the one share.
Well, again, I don't think we can, we can expect one share of water to be delivered and distributed properly.
I would disagree with that.
All right.
Yeah.
Can I just point out that this year, that one share of water would provide those families point eight of a foot for the year? One share of service crew, because the obligation is four feet.
Thank you for that. But the applicant could also go out and purchase additional shares when they become available?
Good. But then that would have to be part of this, part of this plat, would it not? There'd be a plat note that said they have to provide additional water when it's, when it's available?
But having the system in place to deliver it should be part of this. Because they're currently irrigating part of this nine and a half acres with one share.
I will, I will accept that as a, as a condition of this resolution.
And you're aware of all the conditions that is required? The planning department has informed you of all of that? And there's like fourteen of them?
Can we add that as another one, or how do we, how do we actually do that?
Include it as an amendment.
Well, I will make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two-five R dash nineteen, with an amendment requiring the installation of a, of a ditch, ditch mechanism to distribute water to the five lots, and that the water that's made available would be equally distributed amongst those lots. Conditionally approving a preliminary plat, project number twenty-four dash zero seven one slash trademark, to subdivide nine point five five acres into five lots in the Res One zoning district, located on the west side of twenty-three twenty-five road in Cedar Ridge. Parcel number three-one-nine, three-one-seven, three-zero-nine, zero-zero-three.
Commissioner, is your motion also include the requirement to reach agreement for the plan for both the Stevens and Linder as well as the Boyd ditches?
Absolutely, yes. That's, that would be another amendment if it's not already. Yeah, that would have to be added as well. Number five would be deleted, which says no shares of irrigation water will be provided for any of the proposed lots. That one could be struck and added, that the mechanism will be put in place to provide water when it is available. And your proposal to come to agreements with the ditch companies involved and making sure that their concerns are addressed and any changes made to the distribution systems are put in, are constructed.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
I have no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bernard, Mrs. Bernard, you have work cut out for you. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. We're going to recess for five.
So then we'll move on to financials with Nicole.
So I gave you the payables report. Two things to know is the repayment of the ReachWell outreach system, which is where we, with Chris Stewart on, county members can sign up and get text alerts for different events and notices and things. And then the
Say, can you say that again? You did well. Let's reach well.
I renewed, paid the renewal.
Yeah.
To give it, give it another year, seeing if it's going to
It's year to year contract.
If it's year to year contract.
Yes. I'm not sure if it's different for Chris.
I think so.
Is it the same?
I think it's different for Chris.
Give me his contact. And then we use some of our Family Voice grant funds to pay for some media outreach objectives for the project one twenty-seven for finding the foster care homes within our county and doing some of that training.
Recruitment retention and the care portal that your Janet talked about last.
Those were the only two I think of note. Everything else is kind of similar. There's a little bit increase in travel just due to more conferences that were occurring this last month. And then also the annual lease for one of the vehicles on the fleet of a movie. I like that word. Any questions?
On the cost here with Project One Twenty Seven, we're in with Mesa and Montrose or just Mesa on that?
Yes, we're actually in with Montrose and so originally received the Family Voice grant, Montrose and Delta applied together. And so those funds were allocated to both communities. And since a lot of our Delta County kids do have placements in Montrose, Montrose does place in foster homes in Delta because our communities are so close. It's recruitment retention for both counties.
Any other questions? Thank you.
In terms of where we are in the budget, we should be at thirty-three point three three percent. We're at thirty-four point two three, which is, you're seeing we're tapering down because we pay those higher insurance, work, work, work wins insurance and work comp payments at the beginning of the year. And then we usually start going under the percent. And then in terms of revenue expenditures, our revenue is always higher at the beginning of the year with getting all that property tax funds up. Any questions on?
So next item, we have self sufficiency. We have been having some discussions, especially coming back from CCI about what changes are going to be happening federally and how it's going to impact those programs. So we have staff asking questions, we have the community asking questions. And so we're trying to navigate some of that because we still don't know a lot yet, but we know that there will be some changes coming. And so we're trying to be prepared for those. And so staff is working with, working with Lori and really trying to determine of changes that we know were already planned. We're wondering if some of those are going to take a backseat a little bit to some of these other changes coming. So there's potentials there. We are still down, I think, five now total in eligibility.
It's a lot.
It is. And so we're still recruiting our our trainer and our in-house trainer, the supervisor, Alex, she has two that she's training right now. And so we have some applications that have come in and they'll start interviewing, but giving us just a little bit of a gap as needed. And then we do have two significant audits coming from the state. So that is our management evaluation that we will have our first entrance interview and conversations with them that will last about the whole day. The questionnaire that we had to fill out was about seventy-nine questions that had to be submitted of just process standards and how we operate and policies and things like that. So that is scheduled for June twenty-fourth. And then we also are going to have another audit in the fall all with economic security. So we'll be working through both of those during this time as well.
What is the purpose of these audits? Particularly this first one, the management audit?
To ensure that we're applying policies, procedures appropriately, we're processing cases appropriately, those types of things. So there are, they review every couple of years. And when they started this last cycle of reviews, they actually have even changed from the way they were reviewing counties a year to two years ago to the way that they are now. And so some of the policies that they were requiring counties to have two years ago, they're not requiring them now either. So it is kind of a moving target and has been a topic of a lot of CHSDA conversations as well as some conversations at CCI about these expectations from Hickpuff specifically as well. So it's a moving target, but I think we're also in a good place in which the ones they are looking for, we've been able to see, we've been able to look at and potentially implement some of them already. So we're hopeful to be able to start off strong.
And these are done usually three to five years. So we haven't had one in quite some time. So we were due for one. Unfortunately.
Anything else you want to add? Okay, so we'll move on to child welfare. So the contract and action item that we have today for child welfare is the CHAFI state approval plan. So for our CHAFI dollars, these are state and federal dollars that we use to contract with CASA. I think most of you all are familiar with CASA and what they provide to youth, but they do have the Home and Delta services, I think, for youth. They have four apartments and then a main area. They provide case management and ongoing support. They also operate out of Montrose. That's first on Second Street is the housing facility that they have there. They are hoping to grow into having a facility in the North Fork. But for this contract specifically, they provide life skills and supportive services for independent living for any youth fourteen and up. And they can also serve youth that are not in the county custody. So if there are youth that are needing that assistance just out in the community, they can serve them with these dollars as well. So that is the contract we have in front of you to sign today.
And this is all grant funded? There didn't be a dollar amount there?
So the dollar amount comes from, I think it's, it's, it is not specifically grant funded. So it does come from federal funds. And there is some state funds, but it's, hasn't been one that's ever been like in, on the chopping block, I guess I would say. So it's been supported traditionally for, I think, like fifteen to twenty years at this point. Do you want anything else?
It's just one of the allocations that is typically going out to each county's each year.
So this is an action item, gentlemen?
So my move that we approve and authorize the chair to sign the CHAFI in Colorado Foster Youth Successful Transition to Adulthood Grant Program Combined Application Federal Fiscal Year 2024 and State Fiscal Year 2024.
I will second that motion.
It's twenty-four on here.
It should be twenty-five, twenty-six. I can change that part of it on the It's a template plan. So when CASA prepares it for us and sends it over for review.
Well, I meant my motion to be fiscal year twenty twenty-five and through fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, page one says that, but where were you reading?
Down here. Page three.
Let's go to page three. Doesn't drive a page.
You can second that one?
I'm going to second it anyway. Cause he made, he made the correction as a minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So now we have the action item over. We have the exciting item, which is, this is Matt McGaw. He is starting, he started last Monday, so he's about a week and a half.
Thank you very much.
Just told us a little bit about yourself, but you get, you get to share yourself now. Filming through Annie.
Sure. So I'm new here, Delta County. I have lived in the Roaring Fork Valley for the last twenty years and worked for both Garfield and Picking Counties. Both in the adult and family services realm. So I bring some of that experience and excited to start here. I did move to the Grand Junction area, so I'm the community in this first year here. I'm looking forward to learning more about Delta County and the people who work here and the families we're going to work with.
Beautiful. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. We consider Delta County to be one of the last best places in Colorado.
We'll, we'll give you that one, one year of adjustment agreement. About eleven months in, if you're not already looking, we're going to be helping you.
Other news in child welfare, we did have, one of our supervisors went through the forensic interviewing training and is now a certified interviewer, which is a big benefit to us and surrounding counties and law enforcement. So she completed that piece, which was significant. And in adult protection currently, we also added a caseworker who comes to us from Mesa County with experience. So that completes the team. So Matt now has a complete team in adult protection. And so one of the interesting things is, you know, the different dynamics between different sizes of counties and how you operate your program. So there's always things we can learn from. There's a new trick of the trade, right? From Mesa County as well. So they are onboarding him and onboarding Matt at the same time and holding steady so far. So everybody's getting to know each other real well. And that is all I have for today, unless anyone else has anything else to share.
Questions or?
No, welcome aboard, Matt. Glad to have you here. Again, thank your, your crew for all that they do over there and you with all the child protection and adult protection. I'm sure they see some very troubling cases. Okay, thank you.
We will pass that on. This is a rough time of the year because as school begins, sometimes those referrals, we don't get as many. And then sometimes we get them because they're, you know, have gotten to the egregious point. So this is always a interesting time. And so we're doing a lot to support staff. There's opportunities also for training. They have to have their certifications in. And some of those trainings offer secondary trauma and things to support them as well. So those are things we've shared with them to hopefully continue to grow them and to also support all the needs that they have.
Annie, I am concerned about the number of eligibility tech positions open. As I'm sure you are. What can we do to for retention and recruiting in that regard?
I think the most significant thing, and Lori, you can add what you would like, but it takes a while to get to know the job. And that's what makes it hard is that you cannot become proficient in that job till at least eight months potentially sometimes. And so to have employees learning and you know, when you go to start a job and you learn different pieces of, and you start to feel like, oh, I got, I got a hang of this, like I'm feeling more comfortable and confident. That doesn't happen for a longer time sometimes than eligibility. And I think sometimes that's discouraging. And so I don't have specifically an answer of what you all can do, except for we continue to just talk about what they're doing, which is, I mean, I think last month, when you came and presented those awards to them specifically, I think that was significant for retention. We have attracted other people from other counties, but I think recognizing how hard they work and they're still meeting all their monestones, right? We're still meeting our ninety-five percent timeliness. We're still meeting card and hand issuance, right? So we're doing those types of things. And I think that's just continuing to talk about them and how well they're doing is going to continue to help them stay here. But it's hard to attract individuals that can stay in that position for that long without going to true proficiency sometimes.
Yeah, and it's not something, I mean, even with the job description, when you read it, it's, it doesn't tell you what the true job is until you're in it. And so by six months, if you're not at a certain level, it's not going to happen. And so it's unfortunate that we have to waste the, you know, our time and that person's time within that six months, possibly seven months in training and then they can't keep up with your work. So it's, it's just the nature of the beast. I mean, it's a type of job that it is. We've been fortunate to find a lot of staff that have been able to pick it up fairly quickly, but we, we do have some that just can't do it.
We do utilize sometimes the overflow processing center from the state. We haven't been able to use them as much more recently, but in the past, we've been able to utilize them, but they don't do combo cases. They only do med cases. So but utilize different things.
Well, and our supervisors are stepping in to fill in those blanks. So without them, we wouldn't probably be able to meet our, our timeliness and, and those measures that the state is looking at. So they really have, have stepped in to, to help the unit.
Yeah, over the past couple of months, they were doing significantly over time to help.
If a good idea comes to you, please share it because that is a critical position and it's tough to fill.
Lori does meet with the supervisors weekly, and so I do think that there's an opportunity to have that conversation with them. You've got ideas. I like your ideas.
You have a, a reporter on the out of state placement that we have still?
He's still in out of state at this time and we are navigating through significant amount of emails to try to figure out the funding piece. So in theory, what is supposed to happen is that now that he has been approved to Bill Hickpuff for his, his rate and they can backdate that to January, then our expectation is we will be receiving a refund from the facility for that timeframe. But they haven't agreed on a rate yet from Hickpuff's side and the facility's side. And that's what we're waiting for. Once that happens, then all the billing processing pieces can happen. So that will be Nicole's favorite day of June.
Potentially be going up or you have it.
I think potentially it would be, it, the, the placement or the, the thought of placement will probably be long term. But that is dependent also on the youth. And if they're able to make significant progress to step down to lowers, lower levels of care, which is always the goal. And if we are able to get to that place, then that can then become a Colorado placement and return. So that would be the hopeful piece for us.
Is the family still being able to make the trip and stay connected that way?
Yes.
Well, thank you, guys. And again, I apologize for late season later.
We were happy to wait, especially with that joke you got. So but thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Anything else for the board today?